Brianna Harvey and on desk is Jeanette Elmarcel. Brianna Harvey, 3411 Celestial Lane, East Ridge, District 31. Good evening, members of the board. I stand before you not just as a student support president of East Ridge Elementary, but as a failing witness to the power of human connection in our school. In classrooms, hallways, and playgrounds, we are the bridge between students and success, especially those navigating trauma, poverty, social emotional concerns, and cultural defiance. Student support coaches, along with the CTE team such as counselors, social workers, help students navigate real personal barriers to learning such as trauma freeze, housing instability, anxiety, and fear. We support teachers to escalate crises and restore trust through authoritative practice, so students can stay in the classrooms, regulate their emotions, and learn. And I know how much that matters. At just eight years old, I carry these anxieties to school every, each day due to instability at home. That struggle followed me into my teenage years. I had no tools to cope, no safety guides to guide me, no structure for feeling. It wasn't until college that I found the support I needed to succeed, which drove my career down. But I always wondered, what if I had those support centers? That's why we offer our students every day and they deserve nothing less. The seed model, not just a student support coach, is not a luxury, it's missing. Yet budget cuts now threaten to remove these roles from schools, and I have to ask, what are we choosing to prioritize? We do not call ourselves student centers or claim our best calls while cutting the people who center students. Removing fee rules doesn't save money, it costs lives, it costs an opportunity, it costs connections. It takes us backwards, away from healing, away from equity, away from our students' needs most. So tonight, I urge you, please preserve these roles, the counselors, the social workers, and the student support coaches, in every school, not just the big schools, across our entire district. Keep them in the face models for every single school because our students' teachers depend on them. Thank you so much. Jeanette Elmarcel and on desk, there's Pabro Madro.
Jeanette Elmarcel, 57th Street, West Lafayette, 3112. I've been listening to the conversation as everyone addresses the proposed cuts in the budget, hearts are on the table, asking that our students' needs be protected in budget. The district's struggling to figure it out with the funds they are being told they will have this cut here. So my job is to speak for the educators because they will speak for themselves first, as you've seen. They need to see in the budget they are valued as professionals. Actions are needed now to pay them the professional wage they deserve. I've been a part of the process over the last seven years to increase our compensation for all staff, as we know, a competitive salary and great support are what attracts and retains educators at all levels. This balanced budget that's been requested won't move us forward. The steps are necessary, not optional. I listen daily to educators as they express their pain, feeling unvalued and unnecessary, based on comments of past male public education and educators. Their passion for their students is powerful, it's personal. They spend their own money and time to help students learn. They miss time when their own family near. They need to work two and three jobs. Their other major, they put them in the back burner, but that burner is getting hot, and they are still working despite the pain. They are there when other professions would take their time off. They are literally burning out. The support that educators have asked for in their building has been a huge part of retaining our educators the past few years. That is why they have been so vocal this year. That stability is what our students need to succeed. I've been here to know that the changes made have been a huge part of the success of our children. We don't want to move backwards from this. The conversation between the county commission and school board and the community has not changed in twenty years. In order for us to move forward, we have to change the conversation. We need to stop pointing fingers and blaming and come together to solution. It's time to work together as a community to give our children what they deserve, what we know works. The cost of everything is rising. No one wants to pay more for anything, but that is the reality of life. What is your children's worth to you for their future? Can the county increase a percentage of sales tax allocation to education beyond the bare minimum that you have? Can the city match that? No tax increase, just a shifting of priorities. We need to keep steps, competitive salaries, we need to continue the supports, make a priority shift moving forward, not backward. Thank you.
Pabro Madro and on desk, we have a please, Cal.
Good evening, my name is Pabro Madro. I live at 5354 R. L. Street Drive in East Ridge 9 and in District 31. To the members of the board, I want to thank you for creating this time and space to listen to the community. I realize there are challenging decisions to be made for facing this economic shortfall. I wish I could speak on all of them, but I'm going to limit myself to the one that I have not heard about yet. On the final page of the proposed budget, our link is to supporting.com. Under every single line, exceptional education recommendation is worth $1.6 million. We've heard that four teachers have 26 assistance. These are students facing school-based positions that support our students' role. Now, instead of that, what they're going to do is add in fourteen additional behavior staff, three PC gates, six RBDs, and five building manager assistants. Again, that's eliminating our school-based staff, students facing consistent support facilities, and replacing half of them with central office clipboard carriers. In my experience as a special education teacher, these clipboard carriers do not help students. They don't help teachers. I bestow their teachers and they agree. The process is that teachers and administrators reach out to the central office to ask for support for the teacher's special needs. They schedule a time to clear the struggling student, make them go to a clipboard, and then send a list of recommendations. In reviewing the list of recommendations, approximately eighty percent of them were doing, but they didn't see what was in much worse than. The remaining twenty percent, we tried, they failed, or they simply not helped the students. It's a common cut case for clipboard carriers, but it keeps waste of time and resources. In my ten years of working for the district, I've experienced more frustration than support from these people. I did not come here just to complain, I have a solution. I asked that the boarding of those positions be reconsidered, and those funds that would have been used for them go back to actual people that are in the buildings every single day in the higher ed areas. Having consistent, school-based staff members a student can go to on a regular basis that they trust and have a relationship with will prevent those creators more than any recommendation from clipboard. Thank you for your time and attention and not canceling the seat. Thank you.
Cal and on desk, we have Jill Fowler.
Marie Cal, Governor's School Director at East Ridge Elementary School, District 8. My address is 10163, Independence Park, New York. When people ask about my job, I like to joke that it's certain and never boring. Especially tiny areas sometimes it can seem like there's always so much more to do, so many more students to help. So far, this school year alone, I've supported at least seventy-nine families by providing over thirty food boxes, buying snack bags to fit families over spring break, providing clothing on at least thirty-four occasions, providing at least twenty-four pairs of shoes, providing high-quality supplies for at least thirty students, including twenty-one families in our family condition program, thirty-four students being at East Ridge Elementary School and fifteen additional siblings, providing referrals to medical or mental health professionals and connecting families with holiday assistance and toys for toys. Also, I give outlets of local food pantry and post a monthly food resource calendar for our families. My school support for this year include at least four hundred fifty-three escalations and behavior responses, hundred and eighty-four parent contacts, three hundred fifty-two consultation staff about how to support students, and sixteen classroom snack boxes for a teacher who I know has experience with student security. These numbers show that school social workers' positions directly correlate with Hamilton County's mission to make sure that every community we serve, every student belongs, and every school we work. Disproportionately cutting school social workers' positions by fourteen percent, which is the position that closes the most gaps between schools and home for our students goes directly against what's been preached as every professional development I have attended over the past few years. I realize the burden is little, but there is absolutely no excuse for one position to be cut by fourteen percent while instructional coaches and student support coaches are cut by only four percent. School social workers and school counselors should not be cut at triple and double the rate respectively of instructional and student support coaches. In a time where schools are changing, every mental health and behavioral condition concept, why would you willingly take away the positions that are meant to support students? I assume what it looked like to be a school social worker when it was spread out over two, three, four schools each and it wasn't effective. As someone who has worked in multiple schools and now just the East Ridge, there's so much more work that I can do in one building than if I was expected to be in multiple. Even in a school with nearly a thousand students, I have built trusting relationships with many families and countless students. The level of support I am able to give are because I know what my families need and they know that I'm here to help them. Hamilton County was pioneering the concept of having social workers in every building and now we're just giving that up after two years? Please do not take away these supports from our students, especially when so much is unknown in the world and many already feel unheard, unsupported, and burned to the side. We are only two employers in the opportunity 2030 and already are showing that Hamilton County does not in fact say that every school should be closed, every community should be served, every student belongs, or that every employee is valued. This job is never boring because it is needed. There is always a need and there will always be a need. We are always trying to help families that need resources, students with mental health diagnosis, students who cannot yet control their anger outbursts, and students who just need somebody there to listen. Teachers have enough on their plates. Teachers are not supposed to be therapists, social workers, major specialists. They are supposed to be teachers. Let them teach. These positions allow students to be their own.
Jill Fowler and on desk, we have Allison Meyer.
Hi, my name is Jill Fowler. I'm at 1229 dot C. Harris. I am a school social worker at East Ridge Academy, District 11. I'm going to talk about student mental health. The CTE published in December 2023 its Action Guide for Promoting Mental Health and Well-Being in Schools, which provided data that indicated forty-two percent of high school students experiencing sad and hopeless for more than two weeks, which impacted their ability to engage in the school, and twenty-two percent had serious thoughts of suicide. For students of severe poverty, experiencing toxic stress, or experiencing racism in school, those numbers increased. When mental health is declining, then there is an increase in behavior issues and an increase in expectancy. The National Alliance of Mental Health reports that schools play an important role in promoting behavior and mental health well-being of students through education, prevention, and early intervention. When you have an increase in the mental health well-being of a student, they have the ability to learn and the behavior decrease, which allows the teachers to teach. I alone this year have provided a hundred and ten one-on-one counseling sessions, seventy lunch bunches, and two hundred and eighty check-in and checkout with my students. I want to share today, a win that I had. Along with my school counselor, we finally finalized a 504 plan for a child who has been in the foster care system, dispatched from school to school. This new 504 will be able to connect this child's accommodations to address their disruptive behavior in the classroom due to their diagnosis of PTSD, and will follow this child throughout high school. And teachers, teachers are experiencing declining their own mental health. A 2022 survey shows that seventy-three percent of ten take-through twelve teachers and eighty-five percent of administrations reported experiencing frequent job-related stress. This is two times higher than the national average across other work sectors. And when teachers have poor well-being and their mental health is declining, it is associated with lower quality learning environment and achievements among our students. April 16th, 2025, the Tennessee State Board of Education held a meeting, and that report came out that the Tennessee retention rate of Tennessee teachers was seven sixty point nine percent. Part of my practice, I hold what I call coffee conversations, where I provide a safe space for teachers to come and discuss self-care, compassion to teach, and anything else they need to offer and test. It is important to me that they are supportive. Experts say a student only needs one supportive adult to be successful, and I think that's the same for teachers, especially our new teachers. Community is very important. I want to end with sharing what some of the students at our school shared about me. They called me the whole A Euro, and again, I cannot do this without my school counselors and my speech coaches. They wrote, "She is a very helpful, warm-hearted person because of the things she does for people and students. She lets kids take a break from their problems and supports them when they go through things. She talks with them, encourages them to take their time and say whatever they want to say." And that's the same for the teachers and for the counselors who are in this position. Thank you.
Allison Wyler and next is Donovan Davis. My name is Allison Wyler. I'm at 124055, Harrison. And I am District 66 of my school. I'm not sure about my home address. But I am a school social worker at a middle-class high school. This is my second year in this position, but I work in Hamilton County for five years now. I wonder if I could point something out even if it is obvious. There are so many student members that are experiencing anxiety and lack of previous freedom to advocate because their jobs matter and they are important. We are willing to try to help students have access to books. Our jobs are not extra. They're needed. They should obviously be considerable, let's just take it away. Every social worker here has hundreds of reasons and real-life examples of why our jobs are not the type. We can also provide data that proves our effectiveness. I can easily tell you details about the hurdles and student check-ins I've done, the resources I've given our families, or how students eat my office every two or three times I've become a student at a school. I wanted to briefly bag about social workers and who they are. Social workers are advocates, teachers, support systems, column builders, staffs, and partners, and so much more. We pour our hearts and souls into this career and into our students. Social workers are there for some of the best moments of our students' lives and some of the hardest. They do reduce the number of social workers that would prevent us from being effective and will help students accomplish their targets. It is unenlisting and unethical to increase our students' social work radio. I wanted to focus on a part of social work roles that would be effective in social work jobs in the three D's. Social workers and other student members need me to understand the depth of what we do for this department, which we start when a student states that they're having these kind of jobs. I am going to go into a little bit of detail, be a little fun about this, and be aware of that, but I have had around fifteen kinds of calls this school year. That is fifteen children who sat in my office looking nice and I looked at them and felt. They had a friend, they had a sense. I have helped two parents and children that their child is no longer wanting to live. I need to picture how you would react if you were your child that was nervous, scared, he loves you and would do that. It's a heavy responsibility because you know you are in charge of keeping your child safe. I've been spent three to six hours on the phone with local nurses with their permission through utilities to make sure the seat stays safe no matter what. Social workers are trained in how to respond to these situations. We do everything in our power to make sure these students stay safe and handle life. If you reduce some of the social workers or student members, you won't be capable of saving adults and students that are trained to protect their children. I do not see the success I'm likely to see because I know the pressure and responsibility of student safety and how it feels on my shoulders, and I never wish to put that on someone else. But unfortunately, these circumstances fall for. Your vote either can help us stabilize our students or it's not. Please use that power of your vote and help us help our students and keep them safe. Thank you.
Donovan Davis and next is Patty O'Shea.
Patty, even though the school building is already mourning the loss of the idea of the loss of the students. My name is Donovan Davis, 1051 Windwood Road, East Ridge, Tennessee, 37412. Friends, I would love to share, I've been able to share the last school board meeting, my appeal. I have my handy MC for you guys that you can look at later. It contains some eye-opening data that showed a large impact of school counselors having a school building in and outlying, and worked out the dress how Maslow's hierarchy of needs is being met by each level of student support from your school counselors. Additionally, the appeal shed in light that the modern school counselor is not the business guidance counseling may have experienced in the past, but now is one of the most unit-facing roles in education. As a school health counselor, I'm disheartened by what our budget season has revealed about our value, or maybe I should say the under-value of our position. I'm bewildered that we are more at, more value investing our students than supporting them. They would rather cut physical, mental, and emotional supports of our students in exchange for knowing whether or not they might be on track to thrive or on the cheap path. How is this holding to the commitments of every student belongs or every employee values? It's a powerful experience to see the community and the board's commitment to making sure all students have the right learn. Thank you for that. However, this commitment is undermined if we do not have the personnel to support those positions. Maslow points out that basic needs must be addressed first before thriving of the student can begin. Which staff are best equipped in our building to meet the immigrant students' needs? I've got a list of about three hundred and twenty-five individuals that are already serving more than forty-four thousand of our students. It would be more than helpful to help for those students. Yet the current plan is to cut twenty-four and a half of those positions, nine of those being school counselors. These positions are real people, just like me, helping in their school building, putting students on them, to help them achieve their full potential. I know my fellow counselors that I have worked diligently towards helping our students navigate all of life's upheavals. I trust that if you would call upon the many of those that have seen my work to share with you the impact that I have made in the school building, it would be a great testimonial to the school counseling position. Please check some of my references. Mon Moreno, Allison McYoung, Kim Roden, and I can go upon the many wonderful APs that know my work. I know the value of what a school counselor is. They know the value of a school counselor is and the impact of a loss of that counselor in their school building. I've shown a commitment to my profession over the last eleven years, and now today, I'm willing to even make a greater commitment in order to protect the positions of my fellow school counselors. With that said, if the current proposed budgets remain in order, I will offer my name to be at the top of your list of cuts for school counselors. And I truly mean that, because every position matters. I hope moving forward, we can make every effort to our commitments to put our money where our mouth is and to see our mission free. Our students and educators are depending on it.
Patty O'Shea and on desk is Amy Boggs.
Hi, my name is Patty O'Shea. My address is 104211, Road, East Ridge, Tennessee, 37412. I appreciate the opportunity to teach us and make some budget decisions a little bit about what a school social worker does. Thank you for your time and attention, and I hope my words will carry you enough weight as you make these difficult decisions. I heard you say social workers are optional. I heard you whisper, "Social workers don't make a difference." I heard you suggest that aid may be cut. But then I wonder who says that? Who thinks social workers are not essential? Is it you working daily from your corner office? Is it you working with adults all day, not children? Maybe you is a person who never called upon their social worker. You must be that, because if you, you and social workers do, it's not safe to say. For 2020 and 2021, I have been a social worker. How can I not? As a social worker, I work side by side with a family and help them process some emotional scars left by the tornado, scars that cut much deeper than the tree that fell through the house. Remember the brainchild of doing school from home? I do. As a social worker, I've spent my days visiting families at their homes and students at churches, store time to learn. I spent my evenings cooking dinners, zooming with teenagers, helping them understand new assignments to children. I'm reading through that with a damaging sound. The angry girl who held a chair above her head threatened to throw it to the lower levels. I remember her. She allowed me to get close and help her. You may wonder why. Why me? Social workers build relationships. Relationships are at the core of what we do. Relationships allow students to talk about how they want to end their lives. Relationships allow parents to accept a home-cooked meal, knowing they will be judged or jinxed. Relationships allow families to invite new students to help their childhood up for school in the morning. Relationships allow students to tell when someone is hurting them. Relationships make children feel safe and want to come to school. How do I know these things? Because as a school social worker, I do these things every day. The social workers in Hamilton County Schools do these things and countless more, every single day, on many weekends, and in the summer. Even I dare you to tell our students and families that me and my fellow social workers are not essential. Thank you.
Amy Boggs and next is Eric Pollard.
My name is Amy Boggs. My address is 44211, Road, and I'm living in District 2 and work with Mission 5. Social workers are alike, mine. No one can do what social workers do because our role is not our shared role and essential. Here's why. During regular school day, I notice at the right time. Within the first three quarters of this school year, which was 27 week long, I conducted twenty suicide risk assessments. That's almost one student per week who's contemplated taking their own life. This is a huge number, it's only small schools will do. Without a national social order, stories like this not might end differently, but would end with extremely different outcomes and blood on the hands of the district or strip away positions like mine. Losing even one student social order means significantly less access for students who need help now, not later, not when the next crisis arises, but today. While administrators have an important perspective on our school's needs, removing school social workers from the base funding model risks limiting access to critical support for students, families, and staff. This is a structural decision with long-term consequences and should not be based on individual preference. We don't just respond to crises, we prevent them. We create safety, stability, and connection for the students who stay in class, find their voice, and believe in their future. We support the whole child who starts partnering with families, not replacing them. Strong family involvement is essential, and we help make that possible. So I ask those of you who believe that we are not essential, to show me where that lack of need is, point me to it. Is it a student or teacher wanting to die? Is it the ones hearing voices and contemplating violence? Are the students, families, teachers, and staff that we have fed, clothed, and housed this year? I ask you to look into their eyes and tell them that it's not worth budgeting for. Because I can point to every hallway, every classroom, every moment where that need lives, and I promise you, it's not hypothetical. It's real, it's urgent, and it's happening in every single building. When the chronic absenteeism rises, segregation rates fall, mental health crisis is escalating, you will have to stand before this community and explain what you chose to prioritize instead of their children's needs. When you are, but just remember, you won't be defending a budget, you'll be answering for your legacy. A legacy of what and who you chose to fight for. Please do not diminish this essential support. The cost of cutting school social workers goes far beyond budget lines and costs lives. I ask you to protect our positions so that we can continue to protect our students. Cutting school social workers will not balance your budget, it will bankrupt your community. You are not shaping a budget, you are shaping futures. Please choose wisely. Thank you.
I'm Paul Hallid, and next is 3414. My name is Eric Hallid. My address is 7624 Clearwater Road, East Ridge, Tennessee. I live in District 3. My topic is budget cuts for peer analysis. I am a parent of four Hamilton County students that sent Ivy Academy, Los Angeles, and Middle Valley Elementary. I have been a resident
School, Hamilton County schools, the toughest burden that we carry as a school system. I would argue that just beyond our on campus, that the presence of medically trained and of our full school nurses on every campus, every day, helps ensure the safety of our students and staff. I have heard it proposed, but it's proposed, for the few schools in each community that have one and a half to two full-time nurses to put that second nurse to cover absenteeism instead of having parent nurses. I would argue you won't have enough to cover the amount of absenteeism we face. You will leave those schools that desperately need a second nurse lying solo, they would never have their second nurse. We need those second nurses due to the sheer volume of students and the amount of medical procedures expected to be performed by law on a daily basis. Just yesterday, I was told from Hudson Elementary to cover Hudson High to jump in and try to locate the diabetics that haven't been seen online and pass a document the immense amount of absenteeism. While I'm doing that, I have students coming with chest pain, difficulty breathing, and vomiting, and the job everyone will be caring for those students. While I was there at Lexington Elementary with no nurse, the front office staff passed nurses and cared for the asthma while they're dealing with distressed parents and phone calls and being safely, unsuccessfully distracted with their own duties for their own. Previously, when there was no front office staff, the principal had to be the nurse for the day. She did a great job, but this is not how we for our students. Before I worked in a hospital where nurses were stretched many times to where we feel unsafe, as our population sadly gets sicker and sicker, the demand for trained healthcare professionals increases. Will you need that need? Or will you try to get away with stretching the nurses you do have as soon as you can until something breaks, someone gets hurt, someone dies? Mistakes will be made. Burnout will take over, parents will keep their kids in schools where they don't feel safe. Members of the board, I know you are listening because you have a heart for our children. I know you have to make very difficult decisions with the money that's been entrusted to you. I trust you will make the right choice considering the safety and medical needs of our children and keep our PR and nurses. Thank you for your time. Marissa Moria, and next is Allison Moria.
Hi, I'm Marissa Moria, seven zero zero, I am through my grad, that's in District Eight. I'm in District Seven. Esteemed board members, I know we've talked a lot lately, Superintendent Bobbittson and Stewart, I know this is not easy. I'm definitely not listening to our social workers and our counselors and our seat coaches and our nurses. So proud of Erica, the phenomenal person. But tonight, my nursing team asked me to do something a little different, so if you will be joining me, I'm going to forward. Asthma is the leading medical diagnosis in our school today. As of yesterday, we had a hundred, over a hundred and nineteen standing medical orders for treatment. Children that came to the school clinic needing care. I just handed out to you, if you choose to do it, it's a small, it's a coffee service. You put it in your mouth, you hold it for fifteen seconds, bring it through, it's on way. That's how an asthmatic feels when they can't breathe. It is intense. So, with the loss of our PR nurses, and I will say that if they came back and they get off of, just, you know, put in five PR nurses back, that would help, but it doesn't satisfy the overwhelming need for all of our PR nurses in our schools. I am proud of being a part of this school system. I am extremely proud to be a nurse, working, oh, I'm proud of being a nurse. And yes, I do know what this school's doing. Last week, I worked at this school two days, because why? I didn't have I just have. And it didn't tell me anything, why? With difficult breathing, and she didn't have an asthma, and he wasn't a known asthmatic. But when I checked him, he certainly was having difficult breathing. But I think one of the most heartwarming things I've heard recently is one of my nurses called me. It was on Friday, almost time for school to be out, and a little boy comes to the clinic having difficult breathing, not an asthmatic. She listened to him, and he was breathing almost no air. So she called his mom, and she said, "Have a difficult breathing, can you come get him? We don't have the, you know, he's not dying of anxiety." And she said, "I couldn't." So, we wound up having to give him a treatment. He said, "Tell the doctor, thank you for writing that order. This was a miracle." Thank you all.
This is Allison Moria, and on desk is Marissa Hollins.
Hi, I'm Allison Moria. I live at eighty-four forty-three Chambers Road, and then I work in District Nine. My name is Allison Moria, and I probably serve as a school social worker at Snowville Elementary. I am speaking to you today to express my deep concern regarding potential changes to the base funding model and the significant impact these changes can have on our students, staff, and overall school community. Social workers across our district have cultivated strong meaningful relationships with students and families. Removing these supportive adults from our school environment would be detrimental to the well-being and academic success of the children we serve every single day. Our mission is to ensure that every student holds a sense of belonging, thrives academically and emotionally, and is prepared for a future without worries. At Snowville Elementary, my role is to organize family resource sites, leading small counseling groups, providing one-on-one support with parental consent, connecting students and families with critical resources. Each week, I distribute food bags to sixty students, over one thousand four hundred bags of food this school year alone. I also support the initiative such as the Snowville Angel Tree Program, which last year provided Christmas gifts to eighty-nine children. In addition to supporting families, school social workers play a vital role in supporting teachers as well. We help minimize classroom disruptions and enable educators to focus on instruction. The impact of our seed team is clearly reflected in our discipline referral data. In the twenty-two, twenty-three school year prior to seed support in schools, Snowville had three hundred and fifty-two discipline referrals. In the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, with the initial seed team efforts, that number dropped to two hundred and seventy-nine. The current twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we have seen only eighty referrals to date. These results are not a coincidence. They are the direct outcome of the collective interventions that we are doing at Snowville every day, including small group and individual counseling, school-wide positive behavioral interventions, and sports, and de-escalation strategies that help students return to the learning environment calmly and safely. Simply put, these outcomes are not possible without our entire seed staff. While I can cite data and share program impacts extensively, the most important point I wish to convey is this: Social workers, school counselors, and seed coaches are essential. We are an integral, we are an integral part to the vision and goals outlined in Opportunity 2030. We work every day to ensure that every student learns, every student belongs, every school is equipped, and every employee involved is valued, and every community served. We can't afford to treat school social work as a luxury, because mental health is not a luxury, safety is not a luxury, belonging is not a luxury. Our students and school communities depend on it.
Marissa Hollins, and next is Hannah Allen.
Hello, I'm Marissa Hollins. I live at thirty-nineth Cross, Millrose, Rockville, Georgia, but I serve Snowville Elementary District Nine. Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Marissa Hollins, and I'm a school counselor at Snowville Elementary. Today, I'm here to discuss the importance of school counselors and that counselors are connectors. Before joining Hamilton County, I began my journey in North County, where I was split between two schools. I quickly learned that one of the school counselors' most important role in the building is building strong, consistent relationships with students, staff, and families. Being split between two campuses makes it nearly impossible. Without family presence, it's incredibly difficult to create deep trust and connection. Those of our counselors are diverse, often of a different Now, I'm grateful that I was at Snowville Elementary as a full-time counselor in my second year in a row as the second counselor. In that time, I built meaningful relationships with students, families, and staff, that are the foundation of my work. Just students in the car lot are called in by names during the building. This brings me to turn to me and ask, "How do I know so many names?" I I finally told them, "I've been working on it for the last year and a half." That moment may seem small, but it's incredibly significant. Children crave connection, and you want to be seen, and grieving about names is one small way I can show them they matter. The worst school counselors do is not affect our students. They know it's in our corner, in those corners. And it doesn't just help the students. School counselors support teachers too. With the ever-growing demands placed on teachers, we are their thought partner, founding board, and sometimes just a listening ear. When teachers are supported, they can better support their students. Over the past few years, I taught more than three hundred and sixty guidance classes, worked with a hundred and forty-six students in small groups, on topics such as leadership, confidence, most regulation, build some tradition of more. I provided individual counseling for twenty-five students and responded to over twenty-two hundred, the behavior, the escalation, the practice, and the checking, and that number has increased this year by over two hundred without the school intervening over. Snowville Elementary is located and once considered a mental health desert, a area with limited access to mental health care. Most of our school's fall in the mental health desert. For many, our school counselors and our social workers are the only mental health professionals they see. Unfortunately, with the proposed budget cuts, this support is threatened. School counselors don't start young students, we start old students. In classroom lessons, these lessons are preventative in nature, equipping students with tools before it's, uh, escalate. I'm not, the coordinator said, "We've seen a seventy-five percent reduction in behavior discipline referrals over the last school year." That's because prevention, consistency, and relationship building can do that. For the students still connected, teachers still supportive, and with school staff, I was out proactive care early after this was ever the way. That's what a fully-staffed physical support team makes possible. But we are potentially losing out of Snowville. School counselors, we are also the only five or four coordinators working with students to meet thirty. We've also seen firsthand that how when we invest in students, it makes an impact for everyone, and we cannot go back. School counselors are not a luxury, we are not optional, we are essential.
Good evening. My name is Nina Loz. I am
Our desk person is Brianna Lorenzo.
Sorry, I live at one thousand five Brown Terry Road, that's in Chattanooga. I work and live in District Eleven. I want to start off, just in thanking you for giving us space to offer thoughts tonight. I realize that it's a difficult budget season. I want to start off with some data, however, because I know that data speed power really works sometimes. In this year alone, quarter one through quarter three, I have been able to offer one hundred and ninety individual student counseling sessions. When you look at splitting counselors between multiple schools, those numbers are cut and fractured, how many places you're splitting your counselors. I have been able to offer ninety-five whole-group, social-emotional, entire classroom lessons, teaching a myriad of social-emotional skills, academic development, lifestyle skills, teaching heightening, preparedness. Again, if we split their counselors between multiple schools, you'd be increasing the number of services that you're offering in each individual building. I want to speak to some data points too that don't change regardless of whether you split your counselors or not. Five oh four plans, I have thirty-two active five oh four plans online, please load it alone. I have spent over seventy four plans this year. I have spent over ninety hours managing student success plans, or SSPs. If we look at district-wide data, your school counselors in Hamilton County have spent over fifty-four hundred hours managing SSPs and forty-eight hundred hours managing five oh four plans. I want to speak to the crisis, a few people have already noted on that. If we are placing untrained staff members in the place of leading suicide risk assessments, that is not only unethical, but we are not providing the most comprehensive care that we can for students who are severely struggling. I also just want to rally everyone around this idea that your counselors are the bridges in your buildings. They not only are teaching in your classrooms, developing five oh four plans, managing SSPs, leading small groups, individual counseling, connecting families with supports, they're the bridges in your school buildings, and I don't want us to lose sight of that in the budget cut season. I would be remiss not to connect this to my own community's experience this school year. I know that we have a lot of Lookout Valley representatives behind me. We lost a student at our high school this year by suicide. This is serious, this is a personal topic for me to be talking about. When you're talking about cutting counseling and social work and student support coach positions, you're talking about lives, and I really hope that you'll take that into consideration.
Brianna Lorenzo, and next is Etta Moner.
My name is Brianna Lorenzo. I'm a mother and daughter of three of which are at District Three School. My address is one oh three seven Hill Craft Road. You can see I brought my four-year-old daughter with me, Mrs. Espe. I'm here today as her voice and her advocate. I brought her to see and sort of face through my work. When you first see Espe, you see her wild hair, wild curls, and her baby blues. What you don't see is her invisible disability. Espe has congenital hyperinfluenism, a rare condition causing her pancreas to produce excessive insulin, leading to dangerous drugs and blood sugar. She requires constant glucose monitoring and must eat every two hours to maintain safe levels. Due to sensory and eating emergence, she receives nutrition who is feeding to, as you can also see. Espe has attended development and learning preschool within a Hamilton County elementary school. Thanks to the dedicated support of two school nurses, she's able to learn and thrive alongside her peers. However, proposed budget cuts threaten to decrease nursing staff just on position, as well as eliminate PR and nurse positions, leaving schools without adequate medical coverage. In a school of over eight hundred students, two nurses are already stretched thin. On days with only one nurse, the clinic often has a line of children waiting for medical attention. Sometimes, they have to close the office to tend to medically complex students like Espe. If PR and nurses are removed, untrained staff may be asked to perform critical medical tests. I urge you to consider, what if no staff member volunteers? Are they adequately trained to handle emergencies? Will they recognize the signs of high blood pressure and know what to do? Do they bear responsibility when something goes wrong? Our school is large enough to require two social workers. Why does the same logic not need use for school nursing staff? Furthermore, it is important to note that Hamilton County teachers are not required to have CPR or first aid certifications. This means that the individuals who may be called upon to assist in medical emergencies might lack the necessary training to respond effectively. Relying on untrained staff not only endanger students, but also exposes the district to legal liability. Espe's rights to a safe education are protected under Section five oh four and the ADA. These laws mandate that schools provide necessary accommodations, including medical services to students with disabilities, so that they can receive appropriate public education. Without qualified medical personnel, I fear for my daughter's safety at school. My family is already applying homeschooling options due to this and many other concerns. I implore you to reconsider these budget cuts. The health and
Teresa Holland and next is Hannah Allen.
Hello, I'm Teresa Holland. I live at 39th Cross, Millrose, Rockville, Georgia, but I serve Snow Hill Elementary District 9. Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Teresa Holland and I'm a school counselor at Snow Hill Elementary. Today I'm here to discuss the importance of school counselors and that counselors are connected. Before joining Hamilton County, I began my journey in North County where I was split between two schools. I quickly learned that one of the school counselors' most important roles in the building is building strong, consistent relationships with students, staff, and family. Being split between two campuses makes it nearly impossible. Without family presence, it's incredibly difficult to create deep trust and connection. Those of our counselors are different off the back of it. Now, I'm grateful that I was at Snow Hill Elementary as a full-time counselor for my second year in a row as the second counselor. In that time, I built meaningful relationships with students, families, and staff that are the foundation of my work. During the school reading students from the car line were called to my meeting during the building. This great student turned to me and asked, "How do you know so many names?" I smiled and told him I've been working on it for the last year and a half. That moment may seem small, but it's incredibly significant. Children crave connection. They need what can be seen. And greater than that, there is one small way I can show them today now. The worst school counselors do is not educate their students. They know who's in our corner, in those corners. And it doesn't just help with students. School counselors support teachers too. With the ever-growing demands placed on teachers, we're their thought partner, sounding boards, and sometimes just a listening ear. When teachers are supportive, they can better support their students. Over the past few years, I taught more than 360 guided classes, worked with 146 students in small groups, on topics such as leadership, confidence, most regulation, build some tradition of more. I provided individual counseling for 25 students and responded to over 2,200 behavior-driven escalations, practice events, and check-ins. And that number has increased this year by over 200 without the school intervening over. Snow Hill Elementary is located on what's considered a mental health desert, an area with limited access to mental health care. Most of our local schools fall in the mental health desert. For many, our school-based counselors and social workers are the only mental health professionals they see. Unfortunately, with the proposed budget cuts, this support is threatened. School counselors don't start young students, we start old students. In classroom lessons, these lessons are preventative in nature, equipping students with tools before it's, uh, escalate. I've had, so the coordinator said, "We've seen a 75% reduction in behaviors discipline approach over the last few years." That's because prevention, consistency, and relationship building can do that. For the students still connected, teachers still supportive, and with school staff, I was out for active care and a reactive disability event when we win. That's what a fully-staffed physical support team makes possible. But we are potentially losing out of Snow Hill. School counselors, we are also the only five or four coordinators working with students to meet their needs. We've also seen firsthand that how when we invest in students, it makes an impact for everyone, and we cannot go back. School counselors are not luxury. We are essential.
Good evening. My name is Hannah Laun. I am Our desk person is Brianna Lorenzo. I live at 1,005 Brown Street Road, that's in Chattanooga. I work and live in District 11. I want to start off, just in thanking you for giving us space to offer thoughts tonight. I realize that it's a difficult budget season. I want to start off with some data, however, because I know that data speed travel works sometimes. Um, in this year alone, quarter one through quarter three, I have been able to offer 190 individual student counseling sessions. When you look at splitting counselors between multiple schools, those numbers are cut and fractured, how many places you're splitting your counselors. I have been able to offer 95 whole group, social, emotional, entire classroom lessons, teaching a myriad of social, emotional skills, academic development, lifestyle skills, teaching heightening, preparedness. Again, if we split our counselors between multiple schools, you'll be increasing the number of services that you're offering in each individual building. I want to speak to some data points too that don't change regardless of whether you split your counselors or not. Five oh four plans. I have 32 active five oh four plans online and paid for alone. I have spent over 70 four plans this year. I have spent over 90 hours managing student success plans, or SSPs. If we look at district live data, your school counselors in Hamilton County have spent over 5,400 hours managing SSPs and 4,800 hours managing five oh four plans. I want to speak to the crisis of few people who already know that. If we are placing untrained staff members in the place of leading suicide risk assessments, that is not only unethical, but we are not providing the most comprehensive care that we can for students who are severely struggling. I also just want to rally everyone around this idea that your counselors are the bridges in your buildings. They not only are teaching in your classrooms, developing five oh four plans, managing SSPs, leading small groups, individual counseling, connecting families with supports. They're the bridges in your school buildings, and I don't want us to lose sight of that in the budget cuts season. I would be remiss not to connect this to my own community's experience this school year. I know that we have a lot of Lookout Valley representatives behind me. We lost a student at our high school this year by suicide. This is serious. This is a personal topic for me to be talking about. When you're talking about cutting counseling and social work and student support coach positions, you're talking about lies. And I really hope that you'll take that into consideration.
Brianna Lorenzo and next is Eda Moner.
My name is Brianna Lorenzo. I'm a mother and daughter of three of which are at a district through school. My address is 1037 Phil Craft Road. You can see I brought my four-year-old daughter with me, Mrs. Espe. I'm here today as her voice and her advocate. I brought her to see the sort of face to my words. When you first see Espe, you see her wild hair, wild curls, and her baby blues. What you don't see is her invisible disabilities. Espe has congenital hyperinflism, a rare condition causing her pancreas to produce excessive insulin, leading to dangerous drugs and blood sugar. She requires constant glucose monitoring and must eat every two hours to maintain safe levels. Due to sensory and eating emergence, she receives nutrition who is feeding to, as you can also see. Espe has attended Developmental Learning Preschool within a Hamilton County elementary school. Thanks to the dedicated support of two school nurses, she's able to learn and thrive alongside her peers. However, proposed budget cuts threaten to decrease nursing staff just on tuition, as well as eliminate PR and nurse positions, leaving schools without adequate medical coverage. In a school of over 800 students, two nurses are already stretched thin. On days with only one nurse, the clinic often has a line of children waiting for medical attention. Sometimes they have to close the office to tend to medically complex students like Espe. If PRN nurses are removed, untrained staff may be asked to perform critical medical tests. I urge you to consider, what if no staff member volunteers? Are they adequately trained to handle emergencies? Will they recognize the signs of high blood pressure and know what to do? Who bears responsibility when something goes wrong? Our school is large enough to require two social workers. Why does the same logic not be used for school nursing staff? Furthermore, it is important to note that Hamilton County teachers are not required to have CPR or first aid certifications. This means that the individuals who may be called upon to assist in medical emergencies might lack the necessary training to respond effectively. Relying on untrained staff not only end dangerous students, but also exposes the district to legal liability. Espe's rights to a safe education are protected under Section 504 and the ADA. These laws mandate that schools provide necessary accommodations, including medical services to students with disabilities, so that they can receive appropriate food, public education. Without qualified medical personnel, I fear for my daughter's safety at school. My family is already applying homeschooling options due to this and many other concerns. I implore you to reconsider these budget cuts. The health and safety of our children depends on it. Cutting nursing staff puts children's lives at risk. Espe's wife is one of them.
Eda Moner, and next we have Amanda Shaw.
My name is Eda Moner. District 4, I've been 36,01, like this drive. I'm an old-timer. I graduated from Canada Public Schools. I retired from Hamilton County Schools. I was a teacher, a middle school principal, and a high school principal. I retired in 2001. And I'm still here. I'm still attending school board meetings, like, from the folks in this room. Because I am a champion of our public schools. The folks at that board meeting, who crowded into that board meeting, they're champions of public schools. The folks who are here tonight, we are champions of public schools. And you look at the YouTube video, they're living champions who did not show up. And so ultimately, I'm asking you to use us. Everything that is being considered for a cut is essential to somebody. And unfortunately, when we make cuts, as we will have to make, that's when we learn how essential they are. I could speak on behalf of many services. Tonight, I'm actually speaking on behalf of counselors and college advisors because of my personal experience. When I graduated from Riverside High School, I was the fifth in my class of 385. And on that day, I had no scholarship. I had no money to go to school. I had two parents who were high school dropouts who valued education and valued it for all of us. My mother took me to the district office and asked the receptionist, "How can I get my daughter into college?" And someone in the central office helped me get into college. I wanted to be a teacher. I wanted to be a teacher since I was an elementary student. We couldn't imagine that happening today because of college counselors. We had two school counselors for a thousand kids. I don't even blame them. They each had 500, and they just didn't get to me. When I'm saying the principal of Howard High School, the year was March, I got an opportunity to select my faculty. And one of the first things I selected was a college advisor. That future without limits, I got that future without limits because of public schools. Many of the folks in this room and last week, I already gave you some of the examples I was going to give you about why college counselors are important, so I'm not going to repeat them. I'm here to ask you to use your champions. At the end of the day, oh shoot, you're gonna have to, at the end of the day, you're gonna have to make cuts. They have to be separate cuts. We have to send that message. And use your champions so that we're not surviving at the end of the year. We don't have folks saying, "See, we cut all of that, and you were fine." We were not fine. We were working extra hard. I'll stop now.
Amanda Shaw and on next we have Andrew Benson.
Hi, I'm Amanda Shaw. I'm Dr. Vininga Hardak Pado. So, keep hanging with me. I'm at 841 Corwood Street, apartment 3, I'm in District 4. I'm a school board leader, Jackie Furman, and I work at Brown County, that's great. Just thank you for having us here at this public meeting to hear our concerns and to tell our stories. Um, the common theme tonight is a story that we're all telling, the concern over the health of our children and our school districts. And I started that story, our personal story, that I wanted to reiterate some of my comments from the April 17 working meetings with my family experience with the day that I touched an adult. And so what I found and observed is that, um, kind of like these nurses are saying, and the C coaches are saying, that our students, they caught on. They know they're just a number, that they become just a test score. They know it. That's the health problem that they're dealing with here. And when observing the negative impact that it's on my own children, my five children, I recognize taking a toll, not just on them, but on our schools and our teachers, right? The amount of time that it takes to prepare and administer. Um, more importantly, the time spent on standardized testing is skipping away from that face-to-face learning time. That connection that they are longed for, not just for their peers, but for the teachers, into learning itself. There's a long way to learn, and we're taking that from them. And then the amount of time spent on testing are viewed as on par with creating chronic absenteeism. And we know the results of that, right? We're creating an environment where our children are disconnected. That's the hard facts, because if we create a 10% absentee rate in face-to-face time with teachers, that's what we're doing. We have created chronic absenteeism in our schools. If you look at the document, I sent you part of the April 17 meeting, and then I gave you my summary, my reflections. I keep mulling over this, but if you look at it, I focused last time on my son, my friend. Um, he's missed, he'll miss about a year and a half in terms of standardized testing. But my daughter, she's 11th grade, and she averaged about 45 hours of missed time due to standardized testing this year. Only nine of those hours were her tests. So 36 hours were not her own. She spent in the study halls or not even at school because teachers were pulled away to administer other tests. So what I'm asking for is that you flick over this document. I'm asking that not just cutting down the human parts, but one, please catch the rest of these tests that are skipping over these other testing platforms. And then like Minister Barrett said, please trust the assessments and the controls we already have in place that are tools to assess and keep the favor of time. Thank you.
Andrew Benson and on next is Barbara McAlton.
I'm here to discuss a couple of next limited conversations. Uh, Andrew Benson, 6, Sundale Street, 3745. Uh, thanks to the board for continuing this conversation, and for all getting this open mind, listeners, constituents, and strive to better our children. Nurses and transportation are not luckily, they are essential to safety and equity to make an education possible. Without them, chronic absenteeism will rise and affect graduations. This will have a negative impact on our communities and local economy. A fixed school system will drive families away, propping volumes of clients, it becomes a vicious cycle, and will only weaken our revenue issue. This moment calls for bold leadership. We need to be fighting for more instead of settling for less. I urge this board to pass a budget that provides more services, not less, because that's the solution. We can't cut our way to prosperity. I agree, we can save a lot of money if we shut the schools down altogether. Both what less means can look like when we're that short in time. It might sound idealistic, but if our school provided more services, universal free kick, breakfast, lunch, aftercare available to every student for no cost, we'd lift families out of poverty. Parents would have more time to work, they'd have more money to spend. You will see families grow when we make it easier to be a parent. Families would move here, so would businesses. These programs are not a drain on our economy, they strengthen it. If you want to increase revenue without raising property taxes, then this is the solution. Offer more. Every dollar spent will come back tenfold. It's difficult for you to separate this from what we do on a federal level. We're looking at a budget that disproportionately affects low-income families, minorities, and students with disabilities. I don't think that's an accident. This budget takes advantage of a cultural alignment that celebrates the destruction of education and the removal of government services. We cannot allow that to happen here. I know there are concerns, but the county commission may not fully fund it, but I assure you, a specific concerned citizen who has contacted you in the past, you will be welcome to hear this part. I'm here to meet my daughter, for my daughter's friends who rely on the blessing state, for the diabetic student who sees the nurses every day, for the nurses who are stretched thin and can take higher-paying jobs elsewhere, but choose to show up for our kids every day. I'm here for the teachers who are expected to be social workers, security guard, and now substitute nurses. While we deny an increased compensation, my wife has a vision. I've seen firsthand that pensions are overworked, underpaid, and underappreciated. As a parent, I will not consent to anyone providing medical care to my child with kids in the business. Safety should be the number one priority, but right now, your words and actions don't align. We bought our house so that our child could go to a major school, and having to pay is probably taxless worth. The major students who ride the bus and state work harder just to be there. Those other children I want sharing the classroom with my daughter, but now you're asking her to work harder. A critical budget that invests in our future shows we value every student, teacher, social worker, and nurse, as expected, without less. Thank you.
Barbara McAlton and next is Grant McAlton.
Hi, good evening. My name is Barbara McAlton. I live at 3313 Garden Park Lane, in District 11. I also work in District 11. Every employee valued, every school equipped, every student learned, every community served. So now I must ask, how do your proposed budget and position cuts reflect those commitments? When physicians are eliminated, you cannot say that every employee is out. When the schools are stripped from small schools, you cannot claim every school is equipped. Or to stretch themselves thin and students lose access to key services, you cannot pretend every student is learning. And when local businesses like dealer that have supported our local schools for over 50 years are cut out, they're most certainly not serving our community. Why are we prioritizing large vendors over small local companies that take out the access? Let's be honest, these cuts affect every single one of your commitments. How is the closure of the district's print shop equipping every school? For six years, this service has allowed schools, especially small schools like mine, with tight budgets, to access essential printing affordably. Shoving down the print shop doesn't remove unwanted material, it simply passes that burden on to individual schools who now face higher costs by outsourcing. This doesn't save money, it just shifts the expense and adds more pressure to already strained individual school budgets, while certainly not equipping every school. For the last three years, district leadership has known that S R funds were temporary. These federal dollars helped us expand our workforce, and it provided much-needed resources, but there was always a deadline. Why is it now, with a deadline upon us, that we are scrambling to make cuts? Where was the long-term financial plan to absorb the human capital you had? Hamilton County leadership, you knew this day was coming. The community deserves to understand why no plan is in place. We need a transparent review of the district's financial management. I'm calling on this board to request an independent audit, whether from a state comptroller or a mutual agency to find other opportunities to reduce costs without hurting classrooms, students, employees, and community support systems. Small schools in particular are being disproportionately affected. They already operate on tighter budgets and rely more heavily on supply support, yet they're being asked to sacrifice even more. It's been said that Dr. Robertson's team is an important part of the county. It feels as though the support teams that are imperative to small schools are not being given the same consideration. If you can't operate without your team, how can we operate without ours? You cannot afford to cut blind when we call it a strategy. Every decision made here tonight sends a message about who and what you value. Are you supporting our schools equally? Are you protecting our people? Are you saving by your moral principles, or are you asking students, employees, and community to pay for the lack of planning at the top?
Hey, I'm Grant McAlton. I live at 3313 Garden Park Lane, 7001, work and live in the district. And I run the factory. I struggle greatly with my people every time. I've had a lot of school administrators, secretaries, people who are teachers. They have time to be using a lot. Last year, we did 400, it was 4,500. Which is like seven hundred, thank God. I have to tell you, the print shop, I'm thinking. Most of them, y'all, were my school, actually 482 of them. And they So, last year, just one example of a household who did a graduate. They got a close part of $400, of the 425 of these companies. I did a firm, this is the thing that the print shop believes. In the last year, we have invested in technology which has created opportunities for our schools to bring in money through partnerships with local vendors. And this year, a firm outside of the district paid $30,000 And by the way, the school only paid up $26,000 for everything they had done. So, I said, I'm here just to, I was asked by the school, because they helped me. I appreciate your time.
Katie Snow and on next is Katie Hall.
My name is Katie Snow. I live at 4501 Ringling Road, in District 6. I teach in District 4. My students come from District 1 through 11. I'm here to pick up the proposed cuts at Washington Alternative Learning Center. I appreciate that Patton and all of the others who spoke up at the April 17 board meeting on behalf. I am one of two teachers who were informed officially on April 2 that our jobs were being cut. I was hired in August of 2002 at Washington Alternative School, and now I stand here nearly 20 years later, the longest-serving employee in Washington Alternative's history. I am simply shocked, hurt, saddened, and angry that I have to beg others to fight for me to keep my job. Teaching at Washington is not the same as teaching at a regular school. It shouldn't be. We serve a unique purpose and a unique population of students in grades 6 through 12 from every middle and high school in the district. Our students have committed serious offenses that have resulted in their placement at Washington, but they do not deserve less than other students in Hamilton County. Before the 2024-2025 school year, three classroom divisions out of 10 were cut from Washington. Now, before the 2025-2026 school year, two of the remaining seven are being cut. That is a 50% reduction in this year. There is no sugarcoating here. To shrug your shoulders or wave it off as a just reduction of 10.5 to 8.5 staff? That's just insulting, because here's what it really means. It leaves one English teacher, one math teacher, one science, one social studies, and one exceptional teacher for seven grade levels, seven required content areas, in a seven-hour school day. It will not work, it is not appropriate, and it should be horrifying that our leaders repeatedly state they have made sure that they are providing for the needs of students in Washington. Not a legal act of any negative impact there, but so will the overall safety and security of all students and staff. Repeated claims that Washington only has about 150 students per year, and that we don't have more than 50 active students at any time are just wrong. It is demeaning and diminishes what the faculty and staff at Washington Alternative are actually doing each and every day. To average 150 students, and I know this, that's teach math this year, there would have to be as many as below 150 as a bunch. However, I've been here to tell you the truth. I believe it. We have never had fewer than We have never had fewer than a hundred and fifty students at Washington in one school year. This card is a fine, all-by binder full of Washington intake papers, which is like Washington's power school. Approximately two sheets of paper per student that is intended for Washington from the year two thousand and twelve to the present. Not one was a year below a hundred and fifty. I have a lot harder things, but my three minutes is up. I thank you for the opportunity, and I am asking you to let me do my job. Thank you.
And then on deck is Paul Starnes.
My name is Danny Hall. I live at twelve High Down Court on Central Mountain. I would like to thank you for all you're doing here, for being here tonight. But more importantly, I'd like to thank all the educators who've been here and taken this out for being with us. I'd like to talk to you about fully funding the budget. I'm here to urge you to postpone the school budget for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year. I have some experience with the public schools here. I was on the school board in nineteen ninety-six. As there was a principal power, I was on the school board when we merged the districts. I have two daughters that graduated from Hamilton County Public Schools. A grandchild has, he has, and four grandchildren currently in the school. All responsible citizens, one of school systems where children, regardless of income or ability, go to schools that are clean and well-equipped. Schools for teachers and staff work in an environment that allows them to meet each child's needs. Schools for students are well-educated, safe, supportive, and heard. Your job is to adopt a budget and say yes to our students. The county's commission's job is to fund budgets, not set limits before you even submit on how much money you're going to have. They need to fully fund our schools. They don't need to scold you on how you spend money that you may have gotten for one-time purposes or other reasons. Their job is to fund the public schools. I urge you to listen to everyone speaking tonight. Don't listen to the county mayor. His staff, since he's taken office, now has a deputy mayor, I'm sorry, he has a chief of staff, a deputy chief of staff, and two deputy mayors. Why should you be asked to disrupt our counselors, our nursing program? Why should you have to move his mental education students around like they're pawns on a chess board when the county mayor is spending forty-five percent more on his executive staff than his budget? The budget process isn't being challenged. I know from my experience, and you know from your experience, there's no getting around that, but it is up to you to say yes to our students and submit a budget that fully funds our schools. It is set up for the county commission to prioritize our schools. They're going to get lots of requests, but they're taught because they do spend more money on schools than you know. We should be the priority. These teachers, assistants, the student safety, the family safety, service should all be the priority. I appreciate this opportunity, and by the way, our next step is to talk to the county commission. Thank you.
And then to myself is Julia Higgins. Hi, I'm Holly Dunn. I live in East, in District Eleven, and I'm a nurse, so when I get concerned about being able to be in a public school, I'm going to ask them to all stand up. So if you would mind, stand up, lift your bodies a little bit, and I think we all will be able to. I'm really satisfied with the three seconds. I'll move along. All right. I'm here for you to speak. I'm here for you to speak on cuts and steps. I'm going to start off with a question. Are you sure you believe that global values go toward values? Recent conversations would lead us all to the conclusion that this core concept of Opportunity Twenty Thirty is a label that's nowhere. For example, if we're too rich, we're too many people, and employees are increasing their seniority and loyalty to our health programs, in ways that you find it acceptable for employees to bring home work money. How do you justify this in a rival equation with rival relations affecting everything and everyone? I would like to look at your first suggestion for every employee value. To increase employee satisfaction. Should we still value them because you say the words you value? Our own indicator would be the poll surveys, however, there is no system data on the county's website. So is there truly no data, or do you just not like the data? Do you actually value employee satisfaction? Or does a beautiful one could feel like a satisfaction value? So how will cuts pay touchdowns? So how will a pay cut increase employee satisfaction? How many employees grow in public schools are they taught to use for performance? Every move you make goes against your list of objectives for every employee value. I would like to ask another question. What other career fits the balance of the passion that its employees share for a better and brighter tomorrow? What other career doesn't recognize that employees are finding their compensation for continuous growth, overreached responsibilities, and sacrificed personal time? If you freeze steps, which seems like a strong possibility, you are proving that you do not support your own vision of Opportunity Twenty Thirty. In that moment, you decide that no one can do to bring them this, receive the raise. You will prove that it is not every employee valued, but every employee has it. Thank you for the time.
My name is Gillian Higgins. I live at four hundred and one Second West. On deck we have Melody Hoffman. Also, please don't forget to say your address. My name is Gillian Higgins. I live at fifty-five hundred Tennessee Avenue, Avenue Tennessee. I teach in Woodland District eleven, and I will be addressing the impact on budget cuts on local schools. My name is Gillian Higgins. I'm a high school biology, anatomy, and physiology alum of one A and media arts teacher at the Valvoline Middle High School, and this is only a portion of my current current responsibility to faculty member of a small, a small school that you can cut relentlessly for the past six years, if not longer. In response to the recent budget cuts, proposal cuts for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year, I am here on behalf of my school to say enough is enough. The faculty and staff at the Valvoline Middle High School put our blood, sweat, and tears into our small school in order to provide big opportunities, and it is time Hamilton County Schools realized the impossibility of achieving their Opportunity Twenty Thirty vision, mission, and just cause with these proposed budget cuts. We are so tired of our school being on the chopping block all the time simply because we are a small school. Since I started at LVMH S six years ago, you have continued to take positions away from us. It all began at the beginning of the two thousand twenty-one, the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year, where we welcomed students back into the building for the first day of school, missing three of our staff. One math teacher, one history teacher, one science teacher. If you're sense, we have been lucky if we only lost one position. Now, heading into the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year, you are taking all people who ensure that the students are supported and can perform to the best of their abilities. Your mission is to equip students with the knowledge, skills, and supports to thrive in life, but you will not even provide them with the essential teachers and supports that our students need to achieve this. At least we're equipped unless you are a small school who is continually taken advantage of by the county's incompatible staffing algorithm. Over the past eight years, I have worked for Hamilton County Schools. That I've worked for Hamilton County Schools, teacher retention has remained a constant highlight, and speaking points have been wrongfully celebrated. As a highly educated teacher with a master's degree in secondary education who was juggled among five schools within my first three years of teaching, I find it challenging to believe your current Opportunity Twenty Thirty believes that every employee is valued. Continuously cutting positions from students already stretched thin, forcing teachers to take on far more extra duties than any other teachers in this county to make sure that our five hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty gate duties for athletics are covered, forcing teachers into coaching multiple sports to fill our thirty-four coaching positions and ensure our students have the same opportunities as every other student in this county, none of this shows that we are valued. With the proposed budget cuts suggesting for a middle high school that only one night of calendar can meet the needs of students standing adolescent through adulthood, not to mention scheduling is not being valued, and with the current discussions about cutting instructional coaches to halftime, when our instructional coaches have voted a twenty-four-year-long career at LVMH S in Hamilton County Schools, working countless unpaid hours outside of the school is not being valued. Your Opportunity Twenty Thirty propaganda promises students a future without limits, but your proposed budget cuts for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year creates every barrier imaginable. It's time to recognize.
Melanie Hoffman, and up next we have Joshua Smith.
Thank you. My name is Melanie Hoffman. I live at one hundred and one White Press Drive in Cleveland Tennessee, but I work at Dinsport Elementary School, which is located in District Three. Tonight, I would like to discuss with you the proposed cuts received support staff in the upcoming school year. Over the past few weeks, I have heard some people question the need for school counselors and other seat support staff at our public schools. So I would like to take this opportunity to highlight a very important part of my job, crisis intervention. To begin, I would like to share with you the district protocol that we follow when a student expresses thoughts of self-harm or suicide. When this happens, a school counselor or school social worker administers a suicide risk assessment to the student. We immediately inform the parent or guardian of the situation and engage in safety planning with the adult to make sure that the student is safe. If the student is deemed at high risk for suicide, our job is to call mobile crisis response to determine whether the student needs to be hospitalized for their own safety. Mobile crisis response is also utilized if a student is experiencing homicidal ideation or symptoms of psychosis such as delusions or hallucinations. I am an elementary school counselor out of a small school with around two hundred and eighty students, and I have encountered all of these situations numerous times. During the almost three years that I have worked as an elementary school counselor in Hamilton County, I have completed eighty-six suicide risk assessments and called mobile crisis response twenty-eight times. If a mental health crisis is not handled appropriately, it can result in students harming themselves or others. I have children tell me almost every week that they want to die. Mental health crises are not scheduled and oftentimes cannot be anticipated. In just the past four weeks, my school social worker and I have completed ten suicide risk assessments and called mobile crisis response four times. In three of these incidents, I was already working with mobile crisis to assess a student for suicidality or symptoms of psychosis when I received news that another student was exhibited to sanction and sent into the U.S. In these moments, I was thankful to be able to call upon another trained professional or school social worker to ensure the safety of these additional students. But what would have happened if we did not have three staff members who have been trained to respond to these situations? You may not believe that you need more than one mental health professional at your school until suddenly you do. I hope that tonight I can help you all understand the severity of the mental health crises that many of our students are facing, and I implore you to reconsider taking away these vital positions and continue to ensure the safety and well-being of our children. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Joshua Smith, and next is Amy Turner.
I'm a medical social worker. I have a basic skill in broad stroke of the character of the term. Good afternoon, gentlemen and ladies, school members, students, and board members, Dr. Robertson, Dr. Stewart, and everybody who was assigned other day to be in the community of Hamilton, Burnco. I have the honor of being a social worker for our support students, families, and staff at Washington Alternative Learning Center and the Don School. I'd like to know whether these programs serve students at every school throughout every district in Hamilton County. Additionally, I provide support to students in families and serve throughout their program. I'm here to speak now, just as a concerned citizen and a social worker, but as someone equally invested in the wellbeing and success of every student in Hamilton County. Education is not just about selling minds, but about urging hearts to put students to drive, not just to school. The laws of social workers, school counselors, and teachers have a wide range of negative effects on students, schools, and communities. Research consistently shows that when schools in our district judge positions, they work with critical support to promote student learning and academic success for all students. Mental health has a direct impact on our students, and it will be in their ability to learn, engage, and drive academically. Students struggle with mental health and behavioral issues in academics and have impacts on the learning environment, education, and experiences of other students in a few significant ways, both directly and indirectly. Flashing disruptions, teacher attention, racial environment, social dynamics, and significant growth. School social workers and other staff often first set an environment response to students experiencing mental health issues without these positions ever going. Early intervention can draw dramatically with many students without mental health and beginner support during school day. Often, school social workers provide the only mental health support that students receive. Schools are a unique division to promote early identification, intervention, and a hungry support for our students, benefiting the ripple health to our students' safety, wellbeing, and academic success, which is partly what offers me the Twenty Thirty is standard around. Investing in school social workers is investing in all of our students. If you're not prioritizing mental health, you can create a more positive and destructive learning environment for all. School social workers are not even an option or necessary for ensuring the wellbeing of every student. As I recall, a member of the school board commented at the last meeting that school social workers are essential. We play an integral role in the Opportunity Twenty Thirty by advancing academic goals, all belonging, equity, staff excellence, and community partnerships, laying the holistic foundation every student needs to drive. Every school is different, and every school deserves support. There are students who are served at Washington and through help, accept no education in place that the Don School often faces with more complex challenges, needing someone to see beyond their behaviors, someone to have a gate card they need, someone to clearly understand them, who can connect the services to help them grow. This is the district's objective every Hamilton County school. Lots of non-living, it's a turning field with doors and different paths. Removing the decrease in school social workers in our schools not only being short-sighted, it would be a setback to a very foundation of Opportunity Twenty Thirty, a bold initiative to ensure every student is prepared for a life in Hamilton classroom. If you think those are the words that others base on, or to fix our numbers, you are making a loud statement that you've been on by the six schools, you've been on by your teachers, your needs, your account, like spire of work.
I am Amy Turner. I am at eleven seven thirteen, at some pipe in Happy City. I live and work in District Seven. I'm a school social worker in District Seven. I'm grateful to be able to add my voice tonight to this powerful conversation here that we person. A sixth grader who was self-harming. An eighth grader who was addicted to vaping. Three eighth grade students who were the victims of bullying. A seventh grader who was just declared unmoleed and given up into the best custody. A seventh grader whose mom died last Tuesday. An eighth grader whose family lives in a motel. A sixth grader who lives in a motel. Seventh grade siblings whose family ran out of food two days ago. A sixth grader who had to testify at his parents' divorce hearing last week. A seventh grader whose family was living in a vehicle until a parent was arrested. A sixth grader having a panic attack. A teacher who was surprised by and trying to understand a Tennessee law. A sixth grader who is facing court charges and happens to be undocumented. A seventh grader who was placed in foster care two weeks ago after being separated from six of her seven sisters and sent to our school without so much of the pencil. A student with a history of depression who came to thank me today for a medical referral because the doctor found it had severe anemia. because the doctor found it had severe amnesia and the student needed an emergency iron transfusion. A student who comes for a snack every chance they get. These are the kids I met with and plan for today. To say that we can cut social workers or school counselors or CTEs in schools is to invalidate our children, their experiences, and their realities. Are you really willing to watch our kids lose any of their rapport with support? By taking away social work out of face model funding or decreasing our numbers, you are sending a loud statement that you do not value saving schools. You will send a message that you do not value teachers' ability to teach. As a mother of four, I am not willing, and I'm trying to be part of a solution. All kids matter. All students should thrive and experience a future without limits. We do not indoctrinate, we validate. We build connections and provide support under a strict code of ethics. Thank you for your attention.
Okay. That, uh, a lot of the guys here, there were one. Uh, we, uh, committed to seven thirty, we want to hear from you until seven thirty. And, uh, I believe that leaves us about maybe six minutes. Is that correct? Five now? So if there's anyone else that, that wants to come forward, uh, we totally want to give you that opportunity. Okay. Well, thank you so much again for coming. Uh, we, we appreciate you, and, uh, what I will do. You come on.
Good morning, it's Sarah Afdar. I live at church one oh eight, Ozerford, Tennessee. Um, I work, I believe, in, uh, District Three, and I live in District Six. I'm a school social worker at DuPont Elementary. Um, I did not prepare remarks, um, but my colleague was gonna be at home, probably important. Take a stand. February fourteenth, nineteen ninety-six. Maybe before we didn't know that Cory was afraid to go to school, to store, to rowing队. He cries a lot for a boy's age, but now we know, and today it's true, that other girls and boys cry too. They cry for us to lend a hand, come for us to take a stand. A little Maria's window's green, she felt flies and other things, but she managed to duck her head when she praised these nine for them, because in her window comes some things that shattered little children's dreams. For some, the hourglass is out of sand, come for us to take a stand. And Charlie sees this through winter if someone has smothered him with gifts and squeeze and hug them tight, so tight, while he pretends to put up a fight. Or if he's someone at the home who misses him, he's so low. Who allows this child to take a land, look in the mirror and take the stand. And on the side of it, when we pray to our God, we often say, so Jesus, from Amos, Abraham, and come to better understand how to learn to love and give and live the life we taught to live. In the faith, we rejoice hand in hand. So first, the children, or take the stand.
I am the social worker that was doing my concurrent, um, two summer successment. And I am already split, by the way. I'm already split schools, DuPont and Coastal School. Um, fortunately, they are close to each other, and I often go back and forth. Um, if there is double, um, two summer successment at one side and a very tiny elementary school. Thank you.
Okay, and thank you. We're continuing our, our discussion tomorrow night. You're welcome to come. Uh, five thirty, that's gonna be a budget committee meeting, so it won't be an opportunity to address it all, but you're welcome to come and, and listen to those conversations. Uh, we got work to do, uh, but we appreciate you, and we hear you, and we cannot thank you enough. With that, good evening. Be careful going on.